Welcome to the January 10, 2023 Oshkosh Common Council Meeting. Please call the roll.
Mookerauer.
Here.
Hansen.
Here.
Miller, excused.
Wujahowski.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Hohmery.
Here.
Have a call.
All right. Our invocation this evening will be led by Councilmember Mookerauer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance with our students from Lord's Academy.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do the things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have here with us this evening Marcus Kildee of Lord's Elementary School and Maggie Kildee of Lord's Middle School. Thank you so much for leading us in the pledge this evening. All right.
Thank you.
And we have an introduction of new staff this evening also.
Yes, we do. I'm pleased to announce that Nicole Cron was chosen as our chief building official. Nicole has actually been with the city in our inspections division for over 25 years. So she's very familiar with the area and our community. And we're really excited to have her onboard with all the knowledge she has and helping us continue, you know, what we've been building up and, you know, making Oshkosh a great place to do business and live in.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thanks. It's nice to meet all of you.
Congratulations.
And this evening, we have two presentations, the first of which is our Discover Oshkosh. And Amy Albright from our Convention and Visitors Bureau is here to present.
Hi, everybody. Okay, so we've got, do we have the PowerPoint up? Okay, welcome. Welcome to you, welcome to me. Okay, so we're going to talk about the rebranding of the Oshkosh Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I'm going to fly through this presentation. If there's any questions, I'm always happy to answer them tonight. Or you can always reach me at the Convention and Visitors Bureau, amy@discoveroshkosh.com, or you can stop by 100 North Main, Suite 112, and we can talk business anytime. So what we're going to talk about tonight is why we rebranded, what our purpose was, and we want to share our new brand identity. You've probably seen some of it around the community. Hopefully, if we're doing your job, our job, you've seen some of it. We launched this at the end of November. And the first thing we want to talk about is why a change. And as many of you know, we were branded, our Convention and Visitors Bureau was branded Wisconsin's Event City. And while events are very important to any city and to our city and continue to be important, they weren't a consistent differentiator for us. And what that means is there's lots of cities with lots of events, and we didn't feel like it was putting Oshkosh on the map in the way that we needed it to. It's very single faceted, meaning that people were thinking about Oshkosh just in that event, in that event mode. And it speaks to a transient visit. So when you go to an event, a lot of times you go to the city for the event and you leave. We really want to encourage people to stay longer, and we really want to pique their interest about doing more in Oshkosh. And then we also realized, and we'll talk a little bit more about this later, tourism is really about quality of life. The same things that attract people to live and work somewhere are really the same things that attract people to visit. So we engaged the marketing partners. I think I would be remiss if I didn't mention COVID. So before COVID, we knew we needed to rebrand. We had done a strategic plan, and we had said, you know, we really know that we need to talk about ourselves in a bigger way. But at the time, it was kind of one of those things where it wasn't broken, so why fix it? We're, you know, we were in a good, we're doing good things. And then COVID hit, and there probably was not a more challenging brand than Event City during a pandemic when every event was shut down. And every interview that we did started off with, this can't be good for Event City. And what was sad about that was there was so many other things that were pandemic proof in Oshkosh. Tons of natural resources, tons of things that people could do. But really, we were getting attention for being known only for events. So again, kind of that single faceted, single faceted thing. So we wanted to know what makes Oshkosh a compelling place to visit? What makes Oshkosh a place to stay, work, and live? And what makes residents proud? What are they sharing with our visitors? And how are we going to capture that visually? So we started by listening. We did some research, and we talked to stakeholder interview. We did stakeholder interviews, kind of small focus groups with lots of different groups, funders and city people and attractions and you name it. And then we also did a brand survey that went out to 180 residents with 100% response rate. And what that told me was that people had an opinion about this and people cared about this. Actually, we sent it out to fewer, and it kept getting forwarded. And people were like, can I have so-and-so fill it out? And we were like, absolutely. So we really wanted to hear what people, people had to say. And I don't think any of this will come as any shock to anybody, but these were our key themes that emerged. Water was a big one. So obviously, the fact that we live between two fabulous lakes and are connected by a river, balancing the old and the new, the fact that we're a historic town, but that we've got a lot of new, exciting things happening. The historic downtown came through loud and clear. And a lot of people talked about our bright future, that they really felt there was a positive momentum in Oshkosh and that we really needed to take advantage of that. There were some quotes from the survey. You can hopefully see these up on the screen. But the one that really jumped out at me, all of them did, of course, but the one that really, I think, resonates with what we're trying to do is if we make Oshkosh amazing for the residents, the visitors will come. And you can reverse those out. If we make Oshkosh amazing for visitors, the residents will come. And it's all really kind of part of one big circle. So we launched a new brand identity. You'll see a lot of, as we get into spring and summer of 2023, you're going to see a lot of photography that features a lot of our natural resources, which is very exciting. And our new brand identity, at the press conference, we had a drumroll, but I don't have a drummer behind me. So we'll just, it's Discover Oshkosh. And Discover Oshkosh, this is the new logo. There's kind of a nod to Oshkosh on the water. If you look at the little circle with the wave, a sunset and sunrise came through very much through the research. People really talked about that. Again, we wanted to talk less about visiting and more about discovering. So if you're coming here to visit, how do we get you to discover more? And if you live here, how do we get you to discover more? The H sort of is a little, kind of a flying H, and the K is sort of a wavy K. So sort of, you know, nod to air venture and a nod to our, you know, our water community. And then why Discover Oshkosh? We've kind of talked about this a couple of times. But again, visit is transitory, kind of defined as start and a stop. Discover is ongoing. It invites curiosity and exploration. And the idea of Discover is fitting for visitors, residents, and businesses alike. So we really feel like we can talk about everything in Oshkosh under this umbrella of Discover Oshkosh. You'll see a lot of this on merch that we're putting out into the community. This is also kind of a nod to aviation. So you'll see it like, you know, airports have their call letters, and ours is OSH. One of the most recognizable three, three-letter call, call, I don't know what it's called, letters, call, call signs? Call, whatever. They, you know, 600,000 people visit here in the, in the summer to come to air venture, and they call us Oshkosh, and they call us OSH. So you'll see some of this kind of cool, cool stuff. And then some of the things that you're going to start to see. Hopefully, you all have a copy of this now. Our 2023 Visitor Guide just came out, so you're going to see some of that great photography that we're featuring there. We print 30,000 of those, and those get distributed all over the world. People can request them from everywhere, from Germany to Germantown to Amro to Old Amro Road. Wherever you are, we can get those for you. They're also available on our website, discoveroshkosh.com. You can also flip through it digitally. And then you're going to see an ad campaign, and you're going to see, again, a lot of that stuff to pique people's interest. Yes, it's Wisconsin's largest lake, but it feels more like the world's smallest ocean. So really getting people to think about, like, what is this? What, what is this big water that's here? What are the things that we can do there? Another thing that you're going to see us talking through our itinerary, so things that you can do 24 hours in Oshkosh, 48 hours in Oshkosh, how do you add on to a convention? That kind of thing. So in this example, you've got mom and a daughter, and they're on the hunt for bluegills in the morning. In the afternoon, they're on the hunt for bluejeans. So they're able to do that all in one day and really kind of trying to, you know, make those itineraries accessible for, for people. Your Instagram feed won't know what hit it. So again, really trying to talk about those things that you might not know are in Oshkosh. So kind of the Oshkosh who knew? That is really what we're going for. So you're going to see a lot of the tiki boat, because you might not think about the tiki boat here in Oshkosh. And when you see it out on the lake, it's, it's great. I mean, it's just a little happy, pleasureful tiki boat. It's so cute. So you're going to see some of this where we're encouraging people to share on social media. And then you'll see a brand-new website design coming out in May, hopefully, if everything goes well. If you go to our website now, all the logos are new. You're going to look at that, but the colors still look different. And we don't have some of the itinerary-based things that we really are hoping to push forward. But you're going to see a lot of talk about, again, natural resources, things to do in Oshkosh, things that will hopefully pique people's curiosity to get them to come here. And then what we ask of you, basically as a council and a community, is become a Discover Oshkosh Ambassador. And you don't need a special PIN to do this. You don't need a special training. We want you to just go out and discover the community that you live in, the community that you work in. Be proud of it. Share on social media what you're doing. Follow us for ideas. Tell us your ideas. Discover everything Oshkosh has to offer and share your story on social, because that helps us get the word out. We know that our residents are our best ambassadors. And of course, thank you for the time. Before I go, I want to show you one quick video. This is sort of a sneak peek at one of the, one of the ads. And don't quote me on the number of gallons in Lake Winnebago. I'm not 1,000% sure that that's exactly correct. But you're going to see a lot of other videos that focus on other things. But a lot of the summer campaign will be natural resources based around water and things to do. So any questions for me? Okay, awesome. Yay. Okay, go to Discover Oshkosh and do all the things. Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation then on WPS streetlights, utility pole replacements. Mr. Collins.
All right, thank you. I'm Jim Collins, Transportation Director. And then I have Dan, also known as Scooter Cusman, who's our electric traffic manager. So he's more of a subject matter expert if you have any technical questions. But this isn't exciting as Discover Oshkosh and Amy, but we'll get through it here. Basically, we're here to talk a little bit about the street lighting. I think I gave you a little bit of background on it at one of the previous meetings. But just a little background. Currently, Oshkosh, we have about 6,550 streetlights throughout the city. The city owns approximately a third of those, and the majority are owned by WPS. So WPS has some concrete poles, and then they also have some black fiberglass poles. The immediate concern is that WPS would like to replace those concrete poles. They wanted us to, to give them some feedback last year. However, I told them we weren't going to be ready for that, because we had to present this information to you. So we were not quite there yet. But we have a combination of those two types of poles in that area. And then we also have wood poles as well. So their first priority, as I mentioned, was to replace the concrete poles. And the 10 that they'd like to replace immediately are kind of on the north side of Oshkosh, here on Court, Whitespoon Drive, Cliffview Drive, Graber Street. So that's kind of towards the lake on the north side of the city. So that, they would like an immediate answer on, on how we would like to proceed with those. We have a couple options for replacing those 10 poles. So if we could go to the, the next slide. So we have a few options. Option one they gave us was what they currently do, and that is they, any streetlight poles that need to be replaced, their standard is replace them with a wood pole. So that is no installation cost. They're most resistant to vehicle hits, so they favor those over fiberglass or a different kind. And they're lowest cost to the ratepayers. So that we estimate at a 10-year annual cost of about $23,088 per light. So that's the lowest cost. That's WPS standard. That's what they prefer. Option two they gave us is that we could replace those old wood poles with black fiberglass poles. Actually, this would be the concrete poles. But we could replace them with fiberglass poles and a Cobra-style fixture, which is what you see in that picture. The Cobra style is basically just the, kind of looks like a Cobra head, the light fixture that extends out. That is a 10-year annual cost of about $44,889 per light, so about a $2,000 difference versus the wood. And then the third option would be to replace those with black fiberglass and a post-top fixture, which is, you can see kind of what that looks like. That's the most expensive option. That's about $5,400 per light per year. So those are the three options that they've given us. So there are a couple different funding options. So if we went with option one, wood poles, that's the lowest cost. There's no upfront cost to the city. If we go with option two or three, which basically is a black fiberglass pole, one of the two styles, then we would have to pay that money upfront, about $2,000 per pole, and then the annual charge as well. So how would we pay for that? I guess we have a couple options. As you know, our, our street lighting budget's currently a little over $1 million per year. So we could increase that budget, and you could put, say, we want black fiberglass poles and charge that to the street lighting budget, if that's a reduction that council wanted to take. Or another funding option that is somewhat newer, but it's been done in a couple areas, is it's more of a special assessment. So say a neighborhood group would come together and say, you know, we would like to have upgraded or more decorative-style poles in our neighborhood. They would then agree and come up with a policy that the neighbors would have to agree on. How technically we would do that, we would still have to work out. But then that neighborhood would get assessed those charges. So that's, those are the two possible funding options that I'm aware of. Generally, the special assessments is more popular when it's a new subdivision than when you're replacing old streetlights, but it could be done. So San Diego had an example of that. There's some in California. The street lighting districts are a little more popular there. Here, they're a little bit newer. I'm not aware of any immediately, but I think there might be a couple on the horizon. So that, that's the immediate concern, is we have to give WPS an answer on how to replace the concrete poles, either wood or fiberglass. Then there's also another issue that's similar but a little bit different. On Jackson Street, we have, when they reconstructed that approximately 20 years ago, they put in black fiberglass utility poles as well as the black fiberglass streetlights at that time. Now, some of those poles are at the end of their useful life, so they would like to replace some of those due to the deterioration. They've identified six that they would like to replace this year. However, there are about 30 of the streetlight poles, and there's about six utility poles. So they want to start replacing those as well. So they would like us to tell them, would we like them to replace them with wood? Similar conversation as the streetlights we talked about on the north side. Would they wouldn't charge us anything upfront? Or we could replace them with what's current there is the black fiberglass, and again, about $2,000 per light upfront. So I think what we have to come up with are there some possible policy decisions that need to be made? Some things that we, we've talked about, and Scooter and I've talked about, that are possible options. And also with community development, I think that for the corridors or the gateways such as Jackson Street, we might want to consider having the black decorative-style poles and absorbing that cost. And then possibly the lowest cost would be WPS would then install the wood poles in non-corridor areas. So that's one policy decision that seems to be kind of lower cost and might make some sense. Another, like we talked about, is the neighborhood could create a street lighting district if they wanted fancier poles, or council could decide we want to budget with that in the street lighting budget. Just one other nuance that I want to bring to your attention, because this might come up as you're talking to people. Sometimes we get the question is, why don't we install city-owned street lighting? And we do do that where we can. And when would we do that? Basically, it would have to be a new construction project. Otherwise, to install all that underground that would be required and all the upfront costs would be pretty expensive, especially if we're just talking about replacing a couple poles, like we talked about earlier, the 10 on the north side. It wouldn't make sense to just kind of hodgepodge, put them in, because it would end up costing us a lot more than the benefit we would get. So when do we look at that? We look at new road construction. If there's a minimum of five streetlights are planned in the area, then we can put our own service in, and we would get some cost savings. We also look if it makes aesthetic sense with the neighboring streets. So for instance, on Algoma, there's high pedestrian traffic. We installed a ton of streetlights, and it made sense with that area to kind of keep the whole Algoma corridor consistent. And of course, if funding's available in the CIP budget for the street project. So those are some of the things we look at when we decide if we're going to put in city-owned street lighting. So I just wanted a couple of questions that might come up. Why doesn't the city use wood poles like WPS? We generally use steel and/or aluminum. And the reasons for that is the city has limited large equipment. You know, WPS has the trucks to bury those poles, which they have to get four feet into the ground. We don't really have that type of equipment. And also for maintenance, it's easier for us to install a concrete base and then put the poles on the base. Then if there's, if it gets hit or there's damage, we need to replace it. It's much easier than trying to replace another one four feet in the ground. And we also have to meet crash standards. So the DOT has a little bit of standards than we do. But our poles, if somebody hits them, they have to be somewhat breakaway, not breakaway necessarily, but they have to be able to absorb that and be knocked over in some cases. So those are some of the reasons that we use what we do. But what happens if a WPS pole is damaged? That's similar to what we do. We generate a bill. If there's a responsible party or insurance company, we will bill them. But if we have nobody to bill for us, the city absorbs that cost for WPS. They also would like us to absorb that cost. So if a pole gets damaged and there's no one to bill, the city's on the hook for it, basically, whether we own it or WPS does. Another question that you might be thinking is if a neighborhood opts to pay for upgraded lighting, then what happens when a resident would sell their home and the new owner requests a wood pole instead? That's something that would have to be clearly laid out in the policy. I guess it would be similar to probably like a homeowners, the covenants of a homeowners association or something of that nature, or it'd be within that special assessment policy. So when you bought a house in that neighborhood, you would know that that's what you're signing up for. So those are kind of the highlights of, and some possible questions and answers we thought of. Be happy to answer any question.
Question. You mentioned there's a $1 million a year approximately for the streetlight budget. Can you remind me, or can someone remind me, does that amount include the streetlights that have been turned off over the years for electricity cost savings? Do we have a, out of those 6,500 streetlights, how many of those are deactivated or unlit?
Or is that? That's actually our current cost. When we did the streetlight reductions, we reduced almost 4,000 lights throughout the city. So if we wouldn't have done that reduction through the years, you know, quite a few years ago, that million-dollar budget would probably be closer to $2 million right now. So that was done in, when we had some real hard budget years. It was, again, at the time, that budget was under $1 million. And at the time, when you wanted to throw that, that digit in front to make it a million, there were a lot of eyes got raised that we're spending $1 million a year on street lighting. So, and that, that is a combination of city-owned, which we have more than we had then, but, but the WPS lights, so.
But it also, it doesn't just include the, the light fixture itself, but also the electricity? Or is that over in the electricity street budget?
Anything that's a public service-owned light, which is primarily throughout the city, anything that you want to say on a wood pole is, there's a monthly fee that goes with that. So it all depends on, on the size of the fixture. So they're all currently right around $20 a month. And then when we put in a city-owned system, then, then we go to just paying the electric charge, so that the meter fee and the electricity charge, because the maintenance of that street lighting is then absorbed into the electric department. So the electric department employees, if they're not, if we're not doing other city work, we're maintaining the street lighting system that we own and maintain, so.
And all of those costs are included in that $1 million, whether it's electric or rental plus electric for the WPS-owned poles. So that's, that's kind of the dilemma. And as, you know, Jim mentioned, you know, there's about 520 of those concrete poles or fiberglass poles that we already have. To replace all of those eventually, that's over a $1 million investment just to do that.
Right now, when the, the slide presentation showed the, the 10 poles in question, because right now, public service is doing a utility upgrade in that neighborhood. And those poles, most of them were installed in the, in the mid to late '70s, early '80s, and they're beyond their useful life. So the utility wants them out. Problem we have is if we tell them to put the wood poles in, we have a lot of residents that have been accustomed to those concrete poles or those decorative fiberglass poles that aren't real happy to see a black, you know, a wood, a wood pole with a Cobra head on there. But like, like Mark just mentioned, we're, this, this 10 is only the start of, of the, the process. We're going to be, this is going to be a yearly thing. Every time they want to replace or upgrade parts of the system that have the concrete light poles in. And it, right now, it's just the concrete, but we're anticipating, because there's an additional cost for the fiberglass, that once the concrete are gone, they're going to be wanting us to, we're just kind of looking forward, that they're going to want a fee to replace a fiberglass pole also with a, with a, for light. So.
I could make a very easy decision within my authority to say these 10 poles can get replaced. It's only $20,000. That's well within my authority. But the implications of that $20,000 decision really, I think, are in, are for council to take a look at, because that million-dollar investment is going to, you know, have repercussions for future years. And that $20,000 in Jim's $1 million budget, it's a 2% variance. You start adding all those other poles, it's going to add up. And, and I just didn't feel comfortable just burdening the council with making a simple $20,000 and really opening the door to, to a much more expensive proposition. That's why we felt it was necessary to bring it to your attention.
And just one more point of clarification on Jim's second point, the gateway, the gateway poles, if you want, Jackson Street. The gateway poles are part of the utility's distribution system. So they're, they're more expensive to put in. They really don't want to do that. But that's going to be an ongoing cost also, because right now, we were just talking about eight? Is that where we were?
On Jackson.
Yeah, Jackson's sixth this year.
Yeah, and, and Community Development and myself, we walked with public service, and out of those poles, there are a lot more that they're considering structurally deficient. And that's going to be an ongoing cost for those also. If, you know, if they would replace one, if we decided to stay with the black fiberglass poles, and they replaced one, and then a week later, it was involved in an accident or an accident took place, and there was no one to bill, they would come right back to us a week later and want us to pay an additional fee to put that pole in, because they don't have anyone to, to, to send an invoice to, just like we would take the same responsibility. have anyone to, to send a, an invoice to, just like we would take the same responsibility if, like Jim mentioned, if there's no.
You don't want to have insurance on that?
Well, if there's no, well, they do not. They're, they're like we, we are, we're pretty much self-insured and if it's, you know, if we absorb that cost, if there's no one to bill. So it's the same, they're trying to recoup their costs and they really, they really want to try and get to the point where they're putting in, you know, the wood pole. So then it gets into the, the whole gateway, do we want to keep Jackson Street or any of our future gateway streets with a nice fiberglass pole or let them start doing the wood poles again, so.
Has, has police and fire weighed in on the, I guess, you know, public safety side of this in terms of more lights being turned back on versus maybe some of the aesthetic costs?
Well, we, we haven't contemplated installing lights back, you know, increasing the number of streetlights in our system. We have not contemplated installing any more, you know, utility-owned lighting back in just because that, again, we, we don't, that's a, that's a cost we don't control. Again, I think the current, this year, they're going to get around an 8% rate increase if I remember right, 7. So again, you got to remember that's, that 7% rate increase is not only just for you as a resident. Every, every streetlight we have that's contracted through public service, that goes up another 7%. So that the 19 or just under $20 rate, once the new rates kick in, are going to be 7% more across the board at seven, just under 7,000 lights. So that, that's a, that's a, if we would make that decision to start putting it back in, every year, that's going to be a, a huge decision for the council to keep funding that current level that we need to, to maintain just the lighting we have.
But I would say that if you ask Chief Smith, because I've had that conversation, he would absolutely advocate for more lights. I think he has seen plenty of instances where a crime, a property type of crime probably could have been prevented with better lighting or at least deterred. And, and, and he would say that pretty universally.
Thank you. Oh, what is the date by which you need to get back to WPS?
Well, they wanted, they wanted it to be, the project on, I think, Mike, you live in that neighborhood. That project is already underway. So that project is already underway. They, they really needed an answer from us months ago. But, you know, we told them there's, you know, it's a bigger, it's bigger than like Mark said. That's just saying, okay, this year, we'll do those 10 because, because now, are we going to be able to sustain that future years? And we're going to have other neighborhoods that are going to be going through the same thing. I mean, a lot of the concrete poles were in some of the developments that were done in the mid to late 70s, early 80s, most of them on the north side. So some on the west side. But so we're, we're going to get into that whole, you know, next year or the year after. And this gets into the same kind of discussion I was trying to get with Jackson Street poles. If public service feels one of those concrete poles that aren't in one of their construction projects or in a neighborhood or they have to do service on it, if they consider it structurally deficient, they're going to be coming to us and say, hey, what do you want to do? You want to put a, you know, fiberglass pole in there for the, you know, 3,600? Or do you want us just to put a wood pole in there at the new install cost and you just pay the monthly fee? So we're, we're just trying to get it so when we, when, obviously, when we deal with the residents, we want to, we want to have a, a clear decision as to which way we're going to go. We don't want to do it one neighborhood one way and then we turn around in another neighborhood and we kind of do it a different way. We, we don't want, we don't want to get into that.
Okay. Councilmember Hanson.
And in the name of consistency like that, so on CP, we just redid that street and you've got those.
That's city-owned lighting.
Those city then, okay.
And again, that like Jim was describing, in a reconstruction or new construction project, that's our opportunity to, to install a city-owned system. Because when we're doing a total reconstruct, yes, there's, there's, there's an additional cost for upfront for the lights in the underground, but then we control those costs on the backside because we already have employees that do that type of maintenance.
Those just, that whole street looks absolutely beautiful, so.
So if we were redoing.
We could do all of those.
If we were doing, for example, White Swan Drive this year, we would, we would put in our own lights more likely than not.
Yes.
I don't know if Jake can put up that possible policy options for council and for the, for the audience and the folks at home, but those are the things we're considering. So, you know, the mayor's question, I think, is appropriate in terms of, you know, you know, how soon do you need an answer? You know, it's really easy to do the 10. I could simply just say one thing, but my inclination is to take a look at what Jim's policy options are there and develop essentially a policy that says, we'll do more decorative type poles like the fiberglass poles on the corridors. And the, the entrance corridors are basically any street that has an Interstate 41 connection. So that would make it very clear and defined. For other areas, the inclination would be to go to wooden poles because they are a much more cost-effective option. But, and we wouldn't be ready for this, but I think do a little more investigation on the, on the third bullet that we look at creating a lighting district. Many, many years ago, I had, I was, I worked in California where these lighting assessment districts were in place. Other states have picked it up from California and that's what Jim was investigating as we were preparing for this meeting. Not a lot of folks are doing it right now. It's pretty, it's pretty common in California and I have a little experience with it, but I can tell you, it's a divisive issue. In fact, the city I worked for, we got sued by residents over the creation of the district because you had about half of them that wanted it and the other half that didn't care. You know, they just like, well, I never even noticed the lights. If the light's on, I'm fine, but that, there is, I said, there's 67,000 people in Oshkosh, there are 67,000 opinions, I guarantee you. Everybody's going to have a different twist on this. So I'd like to bring back this because I can make the quick decision on the 10 very easily, but I just want to make sure that the implications are built into a policy. And I think what Jim's presented here is the basis that we're going to start using. And if you don't like that idea, I, I take no offense to it. We need to know sooner than later because if we're going to do something different, if we're going to eat the cost of $2,000 a pole, that's going to have budget implications down the road. I can absorb it for 2023, but that would be the last year. We would have to start increasing that. And I think Scooter can attest to this. That million dollar budget has been there for quite a long time. LEDs have actually saved us and with these streets that Councilmember Hanson pointed out, when we, we've reduced some of the WPS light poles because we've built new poles into our street projects, but there's only a handful of streetlights we do every year. We did some on Algoma and a couple other streets this year, but.
Rosalia and Lincoln are both.
I guess my question would be, how burdensome would it be to find out what, I don't know, crime levels or reports for service or calls for service compare in those areas where the lights have been turned off versus the ones that have remained? Is that an easily accessible?
I, that's a crime analysis thing.
Right.
And I'd be happy to look at it, but I think your assumption is correct. And so I, I think you could, I think there, you could find a pretty good correlation. Poor lighting leads to increased property crime primarily.
Right. But the, the streetlighting reduction we did was not just in one particular neighborhood. That was, that was city-wide. So we, we looked at, we looked at our, not to get too far back, but we looked at where we had lights, how many lights were there. So what we did is we came up with a, a policy that if some, if a resident was within 375 feet of a light in one direction or another, that was kind of the criteria that we looked at for removing lights. So, you know, at one point, we had lights every, you know, a lot of areas, we had lights every 120 feet, which is, you know, that, that's why the, the reduction was, why we even looked at the reduction because of that. And most places use 250 feet to 350 feet as a, as their spacing where, like I said, we had a lot of, a lot of lights that were 100, some 75, some 80. So again, there was, there were a lot of lights that some areas were way, you know, and by standards were a little bit overlit, but quite honestly.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think there's, there is one thing you haven't, you haven't touched on here. So we do have some neighborhoods in this community that have utilities buried. Now, if the pole needs to be functional to carry the lines, electricity, cable, phone, whoever still has landline, you know, data communication, we have to have a pole, you know, we need to have a, a public service pole there and to, to hold that. But if we've got ones, for example, I used to live in a neighborhood that had, everything was buried, my current one does two, but we've got the cement poles, those are only there for light.
Correct.
And so I get it where that district or that area of the community, you know, is accustomed to seeing a little different aesthetics because they don't have to have the, the high line, they don't have to have the poles with all the wires. You're driving down Ninth Street, nobody likes it, but no matter what color pole you put there, nobody's going to like it. So I'm not in favor of spending more money just to make the pole look nicer when you're still going to see all the wires hanging. Doesn't mean anything to me. If I'm going to spend more money, I'd rather put more lighting up than put more colorful poles up. So if you've got decorative poles in an area that has buried cable, buried wires, that's a little different to me than just putting decorative, decorative poles up for the sake of putting decorative poles up.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll just do a little parathetical because of one of the goals that the council set for me regarding shared revenue. The timeline that Scooter was talking about when we reduced our light poles, that was one of the years where the state severely cut shared revenue. That was the implication. So the point that the mayor makes about safety, safety got compromised as a result of cuts to shared revenue. And I know the county execs in the audience, so I wanted him to hear that as well because we're, we're both struggling with what happens with state aid. This is, you're having a tough decision to make because of cuts to state aid. So I'll get off my soapbox, but I couldn't resist.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are at citizen statements to council. Do we have anyone registered to speak?
We don't have anyone registered.
Okay.
But we have a lady in the hallway.
I'm sorry?
Patty had her hand up, but she's not registered.
Oh, okay. Patty, come on up. Welcome.
I'm glad you made your point on how decorated electrical wires is, because it's a good idea what you're talking about. My name is Patricia Deener. I live at 1316 Broad. I come to you this evening in regard to, we're talking about the state, but I want to bring the state in the picture, which is keep in mind, he wants to legalize pop. I'm not core. And growing up as a child, my mother taught us from right from wrong and we set our example, example with it and just wanted to bring the picture. I happened to take it out of somebody's house that was destroying it. And art is beautiful, don't get me wrong, but drugs are not my cup of tea. And I come to you this evening, we were at Father Carr over the holiday. I don't know, but you know, there's a, what do you call the place? You're building the new one. I can't even think of the word.
Home shelter.
Homeless shelter. Okay. There was a nun, and I'm not bringing religious in the picture, but this nun was out there for 17 years. She started with Father Carr when I was out there too. And how she came here to set example and to work with the families, to get them established in the places they need to be and bring them up the way they should. And we served 733 meals. I started getting back into it this year. I did it for seven, eight years. My daughter took over after me. And you know, there's some history coming up. It'll be March 1st. It's my home, my, my old area where I used to live on the west side. Hergert's is leaving. I remember Mr. Hergert as a child, when I was a child, and he sharpened my steaks. I had the two blades, steaks. And when I heard the news, I could call my brother and I says, you hear it? And he said, I heard it. And I said, well, I just heard it. And you know, it's, it's a good step because who's ever taken over is coming from Minnesota and that's one of my mom's hometown sister. And it's good that they're coming in here to bring some revenue in. And I want to thank the EMT drivers. I don't know if you know, I've been adopted. I have four brothers up north. And my mom, my second mom passed away and she and her husband ran the EMT up in Coleman for 45 years or higher. And this woman, she brought me home one week and she says, I'm going to take you. I said, well, you're going to have to fight with my mom. And she's, well, I'll get my, your mom to be the nurse. So I said, okay. So I went home for a week and the boys got attached to me. They were younger than me. And Nancy said, you're up, you're the big sister. And so between Nancy taking her kids to wrestling, all the meets, being a housewife, being a worker at Pats, barn cleaner, and being an EMT and doing all her activities, that woman never stopped. And her husband now does not do it anymore. Clifford and Nancy, he goes to all these meetings to reassure everybody about funding for EMTs. And I'll tell you, it's outstanding what they do. And it started with a seed from Clifford's dad and it multiplied. And February 11th will be the polar plunge. I'm going to try to do it this year. We'll see what happens, but thank you for your time.
Is that why you're wearing that shirt, Patty?
Huh?
Is that why you're wearing that shirt today, Patty? Reason for a reason?
Two years ago. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Citizen statements. All right, we'll move on to consent agenda. Is there anyone registered on consent?
There's not.
All right, back to council.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on consent. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Wojcowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, we'll move on to new ordinances. The first one is ordinance 23-20. There will be no voting on this evening. That's adopt parking lot maps in the recently reconstructed 300 East parking lots. And the next new ordinance, 2321, ratification of declaration of emergency for the City of Oshkosh issued by the city manager on December 20th, 2022. In response to temporary closure of day-by-day warming shelter and declaration of the end of the emergency, staff recommends waiving second reading. Is there anyone registered to speak on this new ordinance?
There is not.
Okay. Back to council.
A motion to waive the second reading and vote on ordinance 23-21.
Second.
Any discussion on waiving the second reading? Please call the roll.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Wojcowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
And back to the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the declaration of emergency. Councilmember Ford.
I just want to give a quick thank you to the city manager and city staff and everybody else who stepped up when the situation occurred at day-by-day. I know the timing was awful for everybody involved and you guys really stepped up to the plate, so thank you.
Well, I want to say it's not just because they're in the audience, but Winnebago County was extremely cooperative and helpful and ultimately took the lead on operating the shelter through the emergency. We had a great supportive role, but it was a supportive role and I appreciate all the work that the county did to, to make that happen. And I'm happy to report that day-by-day assumed operations again this evening and we're happy to, happy that they were able to do that in the transition. And we're going to continue, continue to support Winnebago County to the degree they're needed through the balance of their emergency. They've extended the emergency through and we're going to continue to cooperate as needed.
Yes, and certainly lives were saved in advance of those weather conditions. And I know that many people, you know, sacrificed their time over the holidays and through that time that they would have had some probably rest to staff that, so very, very grateful. Any further comments or questions? All right, let's call the roll on 2321.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Wojcowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, this evening, we have a pending ordinance 2322, and that is approve official All right, this evening we have a pending ordinance 2322, and that is approve official map amendment for the deletion of the Campbell Creek Storm Drainage Detention Area, generally located at the southwest corner of West Ninth Avenue and South Washburn Street. Plan Commission recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Please call the roll.
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Wojahowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, we're at pending resolutions, 23-23, approve conditional use permit for expansion of an institutional residential use and a group development at 851 County Road Y. Plan Commission recommends approval. Is there anyone registered to speak on this item?
There is. John Damel.
I think I saw you 12 hours ago. We have long days today.
Yeah, a long time. Well, thank you. I wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to speak. I really do appreciate the fact that people are able to come up here and voice opinions for you. That being said, I know what is in front of you right now is a hard decision to make. Sometimes you run for government things you want to do, or things you want to change. Then there's the things that you need to do, they're a little tougher. This is probably the hardest policy piece that I had to push to our county board, to ask them for a million dollars for this project, and I'm gonna ask the same of you as I did for them, not asking for your support on this, I'm asking for your understanding. When we were talking about shared revenue, this is one of those unfunded mandate things. I believe the sheriff would like us to be able to go back to the point where this was a state problem, and it's no longer a state problem. I want you to be aware that we did bring a lot of the county team, I have corporation council, my board chair facilities, and the sheriff here to answer any questions you have. I appreciate the questions you guys did raise the last council meeting you had, hopefully we're able to answer some of those. And I get it, I'm a Northsider, you know, you have a landfill, a mental health facility, a prison, but the fishing's great. So, I understand how hard this decision is to make, and I do appreciate all the support so far, and hopefully we have your vote, and I want to let you know that our team is here to answer any questions that you would have, as well as myself. Thank you.
Is there anyone else registered?
Not under this item.
Okay. Back to council.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Ford.
Could we have somebody answer questions?
Good evening, I'm Mary Ann Miller, Corporation Counsel for Winnebago County. This is Jeff Mann, Assistant Corporation Counsel for Winnebago County. We have Sheriff Mottz here. We are here to answer any questions you may have. We did provide you some information. I do recall that during our last presentation, there were some unanswered questions about the number of offenders, and there was material provided. I can tell you that based on the current list, there were some incarcerated, some deceased, some released. Of those 15, 12 were City of Oshkosh residents. Now, currently, and again, it's in some of the material we provided, there are four offenders at Sandridge that can be released at any time. There are two offenders currently in the trailer that we have on County Y. There is one offender who has been granted release, and we are pursuing housing. There are seven offenders who have been outright released or deceased, and then there is one offender who was incarcerated, but he withdrew his application for release. So, of the five that we have, four who were at Sandridge, one pending release, based on the information we have, four were from the City of Oshkosh, and one was from the City of Nina. But of the total 15, and those were including some who were deceased, 12 of the 15 were from the City of Oshkosh. Just to sort of answer some of the questions, I think that were on your minds the last time we were here. We also provided you a map that hopefully you have in your package as well.
And can I ask, you mentioned that one of those you're pursuing housing for who's already been released, is that person currently unhoused?
No, he is not, he is still at Sandridge, but based on the statute, we have 120 days to find housing for him. That 120 days has passed, and we are making efforts to find housing for this person.
Thank you.
I think Councilmember Ford had the.
Yeah, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
No, all good. Thank you for sending this information, that was helpful, and you just cleared it up. So, what I'm hearing here is that if you look at folks that are currently in those trailers, folks that could be released at any time, you add that up, you need eight spots. Is that correct?
We need at least eight spots. As I said the last time, this is a moving target, because we never know who may be released to Sandridge, so it's very fluid. The request was, the council knows for 11, and that's how we stand at this point in time. County Executive Damel.
Yeah, it's how much this fluctuates. I believe the first six years, we had one, two, and we've had three in the last year. And again, as Corporation Counsel said, we have no idea how many are in prison that will be released to Sandridge. The reason we went for 11 is we felt that that was the number that we should never have to come back and ask for this again. It's not a policy we want to run back. You said eight, because currently that's what's there. Hopefully, they transition out faster. One of the things that gives me pause is that once in supervised release, that person, because it's no longer an inmate, they have served their time, just to be clear, that person does not have to ask to be released from that supervised release. They can stay there indefinitely if they choose to, if they're afraid to go back out in the world. So, that's why we went for the 11, even though the numbers say that, because we didn't want to be in this position again.
Other questions or discussion from council? Deputy Mayor.
Oh, what the hey, why not? I saw the last meeting about this, I think Councilmember Miller did quite a number. I'll start with, I get it, I understand the position the county's been put in. Don't get me wrong, I'm glad you're in it and not us, but I don't want anybody forced into this position of having to find suitable, a suitable location for these individuals. And I understand that they've served their time, but these are some of the most sexually violent predators that have walked the face of the earth, and they have a high chance of reoffense. I'm not a fan. I'm not a fan of the high concentration. I'm not a fan of putting them on the North Side of town that we have, and either we have or we have allowed to have happened over the last several, you know, decades to continue dumping on the North Side. But like I said, I get it, this is a very convenient spot for the county. I'm gonna ask the sheriff if he wouldn't mind, it doesn't help my position, but I do want you to speak to the community about the safety, if you wouldn't mind. I'm pretty sure you can very eloquently put it, you know, I know you guys, you do a remarkable job, and having them there next to you is, it couldn't be more perfect, probably. I guess I'll give you the floor and let you take it away.
Certainly. Yes, it is convenient. We are within 15 to 30 seconds from responding if we have somebody at the office, which we typically do. It is still a city jurisdiction, however, we have handled calls there, they have not been anything significant at all. I will tell you that with the two offenders that were in the town of Wolf River, we made two arrests there of one particular offender on two different occasions. We have not done that at all with the current location with the trailer on Y. So, it goes, I think it goes to speak with, to the amount of presence that is there. We fuel our vehicles up right there, no less than, there's no exaggeration, no less than 25 times a shift, we are driving by that trailer, either come back to the office or give fuel. So, there is no more concentrated effort of patrol, and it's by design. And certainly, I am confident that we would be able to respond to anything that occurs out there. They do wear bracelets, so the state does monitor what their location is, however, that takes time. The alert has to be confirmed, et cetera, et cetera. With our constant supervision of that trailer, and hopefully the additional housing, you know, I'm confident that we can keep that area safe.
And I, and honestly, I have very little pause when it comes to that part of it. I think you guys are, you always have done and will continue to do a fantastic job protecting the community, just like OPD does. This is policy. This is, that's the problem for me, because this is not a short-term solution. It's been short-term since 2018, when we first had this discussion, and this is not the answer. A million-dollar investment is not the answer. It's probably just the beginning. I think, I think if you're saying 11 is your hope that that's the max, I think that's probably not even close. At some point, you're gonna be coming back for more, and that bothers me to no end. A lot of it's out of your control, and unfortunately, you're just getting the brunt of my unhappiness, but unfortunately, this is now the default, and I don't like it. And at some point, somebody's gotta stand up and say enough is enough, and for me, this is that time, this is that place, and I just, I say enough. So, I, like I said, but fully respect that you're all in a tough spot. Fully respect that.
If I could speak to the 11, and the state has begun to release more people from Sandridge. It's evident by what we have seen, and there are less going in. So, it is extremely expensive, it's about $100,000 a year to house somebody at Sandridge. So, I see it just the opposite. I don't think we're gonna have more offenders going into Sandridge, I think we will see less, and I think the amount of this 11, or eight, or whatever is chosen to be the amount, will suffice, and it will meet our needs well into the future.
Yeah, can I make a motion to amend the proposal to limit the CUP to a maximum occupancy of eight occupants?
Discussion on the motion to amend the number to eight. Councilmember Ford.
Yes, all right, I was too quick on that. Yeah, the rationale being for lowering this is tied to the numbers that were given here, and I recognize that it means that if we do go over the eight, it's gonna be a pain, you gotta come back, but frankly, I think this is a huge public safety concern. I personally, I have full confidence that this is not going to create a public safety problem, but I understand why people care deeply about this, when we are talking about offenders of this level of danger. So, I think it's appropriate, if we do go over that number, what is immediately needed today, that people come back, and we have to approve again, whether it's us on the council or somebody else, I think that's a fair accountability point for us. So, that's the reasoning for the motion.
This is, this is a difficult topic. I mean, the way I see it, we're not talking about just public safety, we're also talking about, you know, humanitarian ability to shelter somewhere. And having been a neighborhood advocate for dispersion, as opposed to concentration in 54901 especially, not necessarily with 980s, and that was conversation that took place years ago, I've come to a different view on that, as we've seen folks unhoused who have difficulty finding housing, who have either criminal records or other issues, that plays into this as well. And on the other side, when our neighborhood was talking about this, there were many people who were very emotionally driven on the safety issue, as well as the, I remember, Councilmember Miller brought this up, as did, I think, Deputy Mayor, you know, some of the concerns around property value, and, you know, within that proximity, and how that impacts some of that real estate, and I will, I think I will be supporting the amendment to eight, with the hope that, and the trust that, in good faith, that we'll be able to look at, you know, other solutions, should that number change.
Councilmember Wojahowski.
Thank you. On the amendment, I understand the reasoning behind it. With that said, there seems to be a lot of thought that went into what we were presented tonight. I'm just wondering, you know, if we change it to eight, you know, will that impact, you know, compromise what, you know, you're trying to do, and what was been presented to us?
I'd be comfortable with that. I tend to agree with Councilmember Ford, that, you know, if the population did get up, then we should bring it back here. As uncomfortable as it is, I think I tend to agree it's the right thing to do. So, yeah, I think we'd be okay with that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on the motion to amend? All right, please call the roll.
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Wojahowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
Okay, thank you. You need a vote on the. I'm sorry, we need to go back to the full motion. My apologies. Yes. All right, please call the roll.
No.
Hanson?
No.
Wojahowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried four, two.
All right, thank you. Okay, we are now at pending resolution 2324, approve 2023 stormwater utility rate, $19.81 per ERU per month. Is there anyone registered to speak on stormwater utility rate this evening?
There is. Rob Clayman.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, I am Rob Clayman, I'm here representing the Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce, 120 Jackson Street. The chamber, you probably know this commission to study to take a 30-year look back at the city's long-term spending and staffing trends this past year. This independent study was conducted by the Whitburn Center for Governance and Policy Research at UW Oshkosh, and it included an in-depth review of the stormwater, the city's stormwater utility fund. Basically, the study indicated that the equivalent runoff rates increased significantly since its inception in 2003, from $19.08 to the current rate of $223.20, which this is a 58% annual increase for the cash fund balance of over $17 million in 2020. We understand that this balance has built up to about $24 million at the end of 2022, give or take a few dollars there. In discussions with Mark and staff, we also understand that you're taking steps to address this, and that you're proposing to use $9 million in some of these reserves, in these reserves this year to reduce borrowing, it's one of your proposals, and are proposing to utilize reserves in future years as well, you know, per your projections provided to the council for this meeting tonight. So, this is a positive step, it's moving in this direction. While we suggested that the excess reserves be returned to the ratepayers, which is basically our local businesses and homeowners, and in some cases, significant dollars, we do understand that there's certain requirements that must be met relative to your debt coverage ratios, as well as you're maintaining a fund balance for a number of various reasons. While we still have concern about the proposed 6.5% increase for 2023, and the fact that we'd like to see the ERU rates charged at, you know, don't require more dollars than are needed on an annual basis, it does appear that from the various proposals you're considering tonight, that you're taking steps to address this excess balance. So, moving forward, we ask that you consider, you know, whatever. balance. So moving forward, we ask that you consider, you know, whatever you end up doing tonight, that, that you consider an annual review of this fund to maintain transparency for the ratepayers, and that this sort of situation doesn't happen again, where this fund balance builds up such a great balance. So I think that's really all we wanted to say tonight. We appreciate your time and consideration for this, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I'm moved.
Second discussion. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I just want a, a quick thank you to, to Mr. Clayman, and congratulations on the new role, but also to the Chamber of Commerce, doing exactly what you should do is, in, in terms of protecting your, protecting and looking out for and advocating for your membership, the business community of the city of Oshkosh, commissioning the study and, and providing those resources to not only council, staff, and the public too. So a thank you for, for doing that, and doing exactly what you should be doing, trying to hold us as elected officials accountable to make good decisions, because that's the, that's the way it works. And so no, I appreciate that a lot. Acknowledging that, yeah, some of the fund bouts, there's some questions there in terms of, you know, a systematic review and making sure that we don't get to that point again. I think Councilmember Ford and I, who, who serve on longer-end finance, we've had some, some brief discussions on, on this topic, and think it'd be worthy of making sure that, no matter what happens here tonight, that longer-end finance has a chance to maybe weigh in a little bit in terms of any policies regarding fund balance. Because this is the one utility that we control. We're, we're self-controlling of this one, that the PSC doesn't dictate what we do. And so to make sure that we have alignment with some of the other PSC-controlled ones, sewer and, and water, definitely, definitely worthy. So just want to say thank you again. That'll be all.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I was hoping I could ask a few questions. I don't know, James Russ, or all the above. First?
We're here to answer.
All right.
And we also have Mr. Cameron from Ellers, who's available virtually.
Okay. Shady. No, so, so thank you. I, I had emailed a bunch of questions, and those, those were all answered, and they were all shared with, with my fellow colleagues here. But I figured it makes sense to share them with the public as well. So I'll just kind of walk through the ones that I think are most relevant. If that's all right with all you guys. First off, can you explain just why we do it this way? Why we do things through a stormwater utility, as opposed to just doing this off the operations budget?
You mean as opposed to doing it off the general fund?
Yeah.
I think the biggest reason for transferring or having those stormwater management costs be paid for through a utility versus the general fund is, it, it is more fair and reasonable, because there is a significant number of tax-exempt properties in the city of Oshkosh. As evidenced in 2021, five of the top six stormwater utility customers are tax-exempt entities. So by having these costs paid for through a utility, those tax-exempt entities are paying their fair share for the city having to manage that runoff generated from their properties. Whereas if it was strictly on the property taxes, all the rest of us would be having to pay their share as well.
Okay. So fair to say that your average property taxpayer would be taking a bigger hit if we did it off the general fund?
Correct.
Okay, interesting. One of the specific critiques, and I think it's, it's rumor that's out there, is that there's, there's, this is a slush fund, that we're, we're transferring money out of the stormwater utility to fund other government operations. And I guess, have there been any fund transfers out of Stormwater Utility Fund?
I'll defer that one to finance, but to my knowledge, no.
Yeah, that's an easy question to answer. The answer is no.
It would, it would be illegal, right?
Well, some communities have used utility revenue to offset other expenditures. We have not in Oshkosh. It's really an accounting mechanism to look at the revenue stream that's generated through our stormwater fees, and corresponding to the projects that we try to accomplish on the stormwater side, including our annual maintenance cost. So it's a combination of projects plus maintenance costs.
Okay. If there was a transfer, it would have to come through this body?
Absolutely.
Okay. Next question I had here was about personnel charges to Stormwater Utility. I know we've seen that increase over the years. Can you just explain what's going on there?
What's, what's going on there is really taking a close look at the services being provided by those staff. For example, you know, historically, there have been five equipment operators, you know, that physically reside in the street division that are paid for by the stormwater utility. Well, the utility is getting more than five FTEs worth of work out of those, all of the equipment operators there. So, you know, it is appropriate for, you know, the stormwater utility to be paying for the services that are being provided by those staff. You know, for example, street sweeping, you know, that is a water quality management practice to remove dirt, debris, and pollutants from the street surface before it can wash into the storm sewer. You know, that is one of the, the biggest duties that equipment operators perform for the stormwater utility, you know, during the non-winter months. You know, we typically start in March, as soon as the curb and gutter starts thawing out, and we sweep until there's snow in the curb and gutter again. And also cleaning out inlets, you know. As we reconstruct streets, we put in our catch basins, our inlets all have an 18-inch sump, so there's always water in it. So if there's coarse material on the streets, you know, sand, dirt, gravel, you know, that falls and settles out and does not end up in the storm sewer system. So every year, the equipment operators go through and clean all of those catch basins out.
Okay. So it's basically, it's fund accounting. We're, we're charging people's time if they're working on stormwater?
It, it's not done, you know, through, you know, a typical consultant, you would, you know, fill out your time sheet, I spent eight hours on this, or I spent six hours on that. It's looked at more holistically. The street division keeps track of how many hours the operators are spending doing all of these tasks. And then we did a, an in-depth review of that, and, you know, we determined, okay, you know, at the time that the change was made, it was, you know, this was the number of FTEs worth of work that the utility is benefiting from, so we're charging, you know, these five people are just being directly charged to the utility. You know, we took another, I took another hard look at it with this last budget and realized, you know, the utility is actually benefiting from more than those five.
Okay. I think this is a Russ question, but one of the, the measurements that was used in the others' report was this targeted capital needs. Can you explain what, what that is and why that results in?
Sure. Part of the analysis, we look at what is really needed within the fund. And that has gotten a lot of discussion and review. But basically, what we're looking at is, we're looking at what do we need in cash for the upcoming year? And our, our targeted minimum cash that's needed represents six months' worth of operating expenses, including depreciation, plus the next year's principal and interest payment. So, yeah, it's making sure that the utility itself is in strong financial position. So that's part of the analysis for that.
Okay. Anyone have, else have questions?
I, I actually, I do. So we've talked about this in, in other settings, but I, I just want to ask, number one, you know, in addition to why this is being proposed in this way, you know, anyone can look at the news right now and see what other communities out west are facing with some of these, these floods. We can look to neighboring communities and what they've experienced, and what we've seen in terms of improvement with our ability to bounce back after increasingly intense storms, increasingly frequent storms. My question is, many of our large projects that we've, or these major projects that we put in, are, are we looking also at green spaces that can act as stormwater mitigation? Oftentimes, that gets put into parks and recreation as quality of life, but we're not always looking at it as our green infrastructure ability to mitigate this. So I guess my question is, is, is there a thought to also looking to acquiring additional green space that can mitigate some of these floods, that may be less development-intensive as some of the detention and retention?
We, we do have, you know, some of the watersheds that we're currently analyzing that are, you know, do still have a, a stream within them. You know, we are looking at some of the alternatives there of, you know, kind of implementing what I would call a bit of a constructed floodplain along portions of those streams, where, you know, it's really, it's not an area that's exceptionally conducive to development for some of these. So we're looking at, all right, you know, can we try to mimic what nature historically would have had? So there are some cases where we are trying to do that, where, you know, the, the land is there that we can do it to. You know, unfortunately, if we look at some of the watersheds where we've experienced the most flooding over historically, the Sawyer Creek watershed, the Campbell Creek watershed, the Stringham watershed, it's not there. You know, in the case of Campbell and Stringham, those, you know, former creeks have been completely enclosed and houses built on top of them. You know, Sawyer Creek is still a channel, but, you know, very much built right up to. So, you know, some of those, it's a little more challenging. But where we do have some opportunities, that is a part of the strategy as we can complete stormwater management plans for some of these unstudied watersheds yet.
So would that kind of fall in line with, I guess, some have described it as like managed retreat, or, you know, as, as properties maybe are no longer viable in terms of either commercial or residential, not rebuilding on them, you know, as, as they, I guess, come off? I, I guess, it, it just seems that sometimes we're, we're looking at it really narrowly, and it, it seems that the cost of this type is, is more the short-term fix. And so I, I appreciate that you're looking along those. Where water wants to go, it will go.
It, it certainly does. And, you know, I think anytime that we're looking at, you know, developing a plan for managing, you know, water within any watershed, you know, we're trying to look at any and all possibilities. It's just, you know, we have some history to, to deal with yet as well. And, you know, that is one of the downsides to being a very old city, you know, where there's a, a lot of history to overcome. There are a lot of upsides to being, you know, having been here as long as we've been as well. But that is one of the drawbacks, unfortunately.
Thank you. So as I understand it, then, we have recommendations here of an initial 6.5% for '23 and '24, averaging 1.25 for eight years. Is that an either-or 2% annual increase, and then reducing the 14 million?
You've summed up scenario one. That's not an either-or. That, that is the whole scenario. So six and a half for the first two years in our model, and 1.25 for the remainder. That's an average, because there, there's a few zeros in there, and there's a four, and then a couple twos, and it's all together.
And I think, you know, that's one of the things that we do look at annually, is trying to balance the capital improvement program plan out a little bit, you know, just to try to smooth bumps out.
And so Mr. City Manager, if I could expand on that, please?
You go right ahead, because I, the depth of my analysis is.
We're treating this study as something new, and it's not. We've done this other years in the past, but it hasn't gathered and garnered this much discussion. We typically, once we do our capital improvement plan, and we look at the projects we want to do over the next 10 years, then we come back and say, okay, if these are the projects we want to do, how are we going to fund those projects? And the scenario, scenario number one that we're presenting, and staff is recommending to you tonight, has a 6.5% increase for next year, a 6.5% increase in 2024. But then, as you noted in my summary page, the average after that is 1.24. So a lot of it's front-end loaded. But when we did this, this year, what we really looked at was the working capital within the fund. Prior years, we basically said, we need to do $15 million worth of projects. We're going to go out and borrow $15 million. This year, we're looking at reducing that down by $9 million to just around $6 million. And we have other years in the 10-year plan that's part of that packet, where we actually will not have debt being issued for stormwater projects. We're trying to get to the position, especially with increasing interest rates on the issuance of debt, to the position where this can be kind of cash-funded, so that the rates will cover future projects. If, if I can, would I, I T, just to put up the, the, the graph from scenario one, so that everybody can see this, because I think that, that tells a story. So if we can pop up that graph from scenario one on the screen. This shows that the blue line is the total project. So we've got $15 million of projects in 2023. Again, this is based on the adopted capital improvement plan that you have looked at and actually adopted earlier this year. The gray shaded area is how much is going to be issued by debt. The orange, the bottom portion, is how much is going to be cash-funded. So you can see, we have $9 million worth of cash being consumed and not issuing debt, which I think is a good financial picture for the utility and for the city. But if you look out into 2028, 2020, 2030, and 2031, and 2032, we are projecting no, no issuance of debt. We're, based on this cash flow analysis, this rate analysis, when, when we use up the cash that we have, and, and we're trying to spread that out, we, we got a lot that we want to use in 2023, but we draw that down a little bit to make it more realistic. But there are years where we are going to be, if everything holds true, in a position not to have to issue debt for stormwater projects, which I think is a good story, and I think where you want to be, especially when you look at what's going on with the interest rates on municipal bond markets right now. So I think that's a good story to tell. We did look at a couple other scenarios. We looked at a scenario where we had a flat 2% going over the 10 years. That was scenario two. Our issue with scenario two is, based on that option, we don't have the ability to do any projects in 2024. We would have to go $14 million and take that out of the CIP process moving forward. And we would be, again, able to use cash in the later years, but we're pushing back the total projects a little bit further. We also looked at scenario three, which is a 2.25, that restores the ability to have funding in 2024. But again, it pushes back some of these capital projects. So when we looked at the cash flow analysis of the utility, our recommendation is to still stay with the difficult decision of, of doing the 6.5 this year. The other factor that goes into this is we have an obligation to people that have already purchased our debt, our, our bondholders. And, and that obligation is, we say we will have 1.2x our net operating revenues to offset our principal and interest payments. That is a, basically a bottom line. If it's, it goes above 1.2, it doesn't mean we have more money available. It just means that the fund is operating in a stronger financial position. We have different debt ratios for our other utilities, for our, our sewer utility and our water utility. So, you know, we're, we're sticking with our recommendation on scenario one, but I just wanted to let you know that we did look at other options, and trying to make this work.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, no, thank you for looking at those options. I know that's exactly what we asked for, so it is much appreciated. And I think I can, I can stomach the recommended option. I mean, we take a look at what these rate increases have been driven by, and it's been a combination of needed projects, and intentionally or not, the accumulation of this, this cash balance. And I'm, I'm happy that the recommended option one applies some of that cash balance to offset future debt, because what that's really doing is that it's paying off, using, using our current rate increases to pay off, or pay down future rate increases. That would be driven by increased debt service costs. So I know it's not as satisfying for the folks at the, at the chamber or the business community as getting cash back at hand, but it is a So I know it's not as satisfying for the folks at the, at the chamber or the business community as getting cash back at hand, but it is a down payment against future rate increases. And I do think, am I correct in the way I'm describing that?
You are. I guess my only caveat would be, you know, we, we try to look at all of our users on the same basis, whether it's residential, commercial or industrial. They all have the same ERU unit price. It depends on how much runoff is being generated. The whole premise that we, that Mr. Robbie talked about before is that the fact that we want people that are contributing to stormwater runoff to pay for it based on how much they generate, which is different than the valuation or the taxable valuation of a piece of property.
Oh, yeah. And, and I get that, but it's the, it's the sticker shock that occurs to these larger, these larger properties. Right? I think that's, go ahead, Mark.
One of the things I was going to point out on page 189 on the, on your computer version, the PDF version, we've summarized the three areas. And one of the things that I think really jumped out to me when, when Russ and James showed this to me was we're going to be, with scenario one, we'll use more cash on our projects over the next 10 years and we'll actually borrow less than scenario three. Well, it's more than scenario two, but scenario two was cutting out $14 million in projects, but we're actually going to borrow less under scenario one over that 10-year period. And I think that's, and I, I appreciate the chamber having the report done that confirmed, but our fear was, is like, we've built up a cash reserve that we, that we don't, we cannot justify maintaining that high a cash reserve. But we have a responsibility to have a responsible cash balance. And so we're going to draw it down and we're going to draw it down to the tune of $42 million over a 10-year period. That's not, it's going to start with $9 million, Russ?
Correct.
The first year. And then, you know, a few more million each year, but I think it's more responsible to be putting more cash, especially now in a rising interest rate environment where we do less debt, more cash. It's a much better approach from a, from a fiscal responsibility standpoint. And I'm, I'm more than happy to be held accountable for, for keeping an eye on that. And I think Mr. Kleiman has said he wants to keep an eye on it. So, you know, if, to the degree we have long-range finance, look at it. I think that's an appropriate role for long-range finance and Mr. Kleiman can come to the meetings and, and make sure that we're going to do that.
And that's, that's where I was going with this. I mean, I do hope we, we, we do approve this today. We also take up Deputy Mayor Mugrower's idea of bringing this to long-range finance to create a, a cash balance policy so we don't get to, to a situation where we have that large of a balance again. I also, just back of the envelope math, so it's probably wrong, Russ, but it seems like we're still a few million dollars over our targeted capital needs even after we, we spend down the cash on hand. So at the very least, I hope we look at that and explore if we do have any capacity
Sure.
to use any of those funds to offset future rate increases. And similarly, if we could take a look at, you know, any of our remaining ARPA funds, if there's any way to use some of that for stormwater utility and offset some of that. I think we have to recognize that the fiscal burden on our residents and our commercials far more than the property tax.
Very, very good comments. Like I, I said early on, this is not a one-time or once every three-year event. We do this every year. So as long as these assumptions as far as rate collections and, and capital projects and operating costs continue, we should be okay. But we will look at the operation of these utility every single year. We typically try to get this to council more in the fall of the year when we're going through the budget process. Some things got pushed back a little bit this year with the budget, with everything else going on. So that's why it was kind of brought to you towards the end of the calendar year. But we are committed to continue to evaluate and, and review. As far as the ARPA funds, right now as it stands, we have about $7 million, give or take, that is not committed. But the last handout I presented to city council when we did the last round of appropriations, I had earmarked some potential public safety, including some acquisition of fire equipment. That's not planned for debt that would be used by ARPA. We also have some economic development projects that are on the horizon. Again, if we look at issuing debt, that's more of a taxable issue. So the last round of projects, I had all but about $500,000 already kind of accounted for. You haven't appropriated that last seven and a half million dollars, but we would do that as part of our 2024 budget discussions. So I'm, while it would be nice to use some of our ARPA funds for stormwater, when I've looked at and discussed where we want to recommend ARPA funding projects for, we've kind of wanted to try to recommend projects that we could actually point our finger on and say, that was an ARPA project. And most of that tended to be public safety or other IT solutions or other projects. I think you at least get a better visual that that's where the money's going. It's not that putting a hole in the ground for a stormwater detention basin is, is not appealing, but it is kind of sight on scene. So we really haven't done a lot on the ARPA projects for some of our utility stuff. We tried to have the utilities pay for the utilities as we go along and we kept the ARPA maybe more for some of our other, other general obligation projects.
I've noticed that. I had to spread the love.
And if I could, Ms. Robbie, would you share again to the process by which property owners can apply for the stormwater credits?
Yeah, there are two different credit policies that have been approved by council, one for residential properties and one for non-residential properties. Those policies are available on the stormwater utility webpage as well as the application materials. And if there's any questions on the policy, certainly, you know, people are more than welcome to call the engineering division at 920-236-5065 and ask for one of the stormwater staff to assist them.
Would it be possible, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, to just give kind of an example of maybe where a residential property owner and a commercial property owner have applied for that and like what kind of things they did and how that resulted? I mean, again, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. It just occurred to me.
Yeah, they're, they're very different. There's two different aspects of the credit policy. One is for riparian properties and one is for properties that have constructed practices. So obviously, you know, a riparian property, you know, that's property that, you know, a portion of that property drains directly to Lake Winnebago, Lake Buttermore, the Fox River. But as far as constructed practices, you know, for residential, it's usually rain gardens. For non-residential, it could be any number of things, detention basins, biofilters or any other stormwater practice to, to meet their criteria. There's a peak flow control aspect of it as well as a pollution control aspect of it. But it does generally hinge on practices being constructed in accordance with approved DNR technical standards. And then, you know, requires some effort to show us what, what the effectiveness of those practices is.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? All right, so we will call the roll. Mugrower?
Aye.
Hansen?
Aye.
Wojcowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six. Thank you. We have a new resolution, 2325, approved city manager performance evaluation for 2022. Is there anyone registered to speak on this? There's not. All right, back to council.
It's all moved.
Second.
Discussion, Deputy Mayor?
There you go. You got me before I even did it. First, before I get into the, a brief statement, just want to say thank you to the, to my fellow colleagues for going through the process with me and with us and being attentive and responsive and taking your, your role as part of the review process seriously. And I think the discussion continues to get better and better each year and the process gets better each year that we go through this. And it's an important thing we do. So I just want to say thank you to, to all of you for going through that. For the, for those at home, we can view, we convene annually to complete a, an annual review of the city manager. He's our sole employee that we have the purview and responsibility over. And we've done that and we'll report back that, I'll read a brief statement, I guess. City Manager Roloff is a highly effective leader who provides steady con leadership. We value his opinion and we trust his judgment. We continue to be encouraged by his highly motivated staff and their can-do spirit. He's committed to carrying out the city strategic plan. The Oshkosh Common Council has completed the city manager's annual review and find that he has exceeded our expectations and that his performance is more than satisfactory. City Manager Roloff continues to perform at a high level with genuine enthusiasm and desire to keep Oshkosh moving forward. In partnership with the city manager, with City Manager Roloff, we have established goals for 2023 that reflect our mutual desire to continue making Oshkosh a better place to live, work and play. And so with that, I just want to say thank you to city manager for another year and another job well done and looking forward to many, many more.
Thank you. I appreciate the support and look forward to continuing serving you and the city residents of Oshkosh.
And I'd just like to say thank you to the other council members as well as city manager, deputy mayor, on the establishment of the 2023 city manager goals. I'm most impressed by some very ambitious goals that were very thoughtful with regard to including diversity, equity and inclusion and sustainability with regard to some of their plans and pursuing grant funding and working to incorporate those sustainability and DEI concepts into our city policies. You know, a few months back, we implemented or we passed a resolution regarding environmental justice. And it was thought that there would be environmental justice lens applied to our different development projects. Appreciative of that, but this kind of goes a little further in detail and really appreciate everybody's input on that. Councilmember Wojcowski?
Yeah, I'll just echo that. I think, you know, we've come a long way in the fact that, you know, these two goals are, not, not that there is an order of importance, but that they're one and two. You know, I'm really happy and excited to see where we go on these specific goals. They are very ambitious, but I, you know, trust Mark to do his best to accomplish them. So thank you to everyone else who's supported having these goals on here as well.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll. Mugrower?
Aye.
Hansen?
Aye.
Wojcowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six. All right, next we are on to council discussion and direction to city manager and future agenda items. Under agenda item, future agenda items, this would be determined whether or not there be a scheduled date for a closed session regarding negotiation on development agreement for the city center. I'd also like to ask whether or not council would entertain a discussion or an agenda item regarding, something that was brought to my attention about a toolkit for what's called a responsible bidder ordinance. I can't go into a lot of the detail and I apologize. I meant to get a copy of that sent out electronically. It just came to my attention this week. So just kind of wondering if folks would be interested in having a conversation or mini workshop about what those responsible bidder ordinances look like.
First, I thought you were talking about old-fashioned, so I got confused there. Different bidders.
Oh!
A bid. Meeting's still going on, I got to remember that.
Yes.
Are there, is there like something we can send around and I'll take a look at? I think that would be helpful as a first step.
Okay.
Perhaps Mayor, if you could share some information with staff, we could take a look at that. So one, make sure that we're understanding, we, we understand it's not, not old-fashioned.
Not the bidders, but bidders.
I would have enthusiastically pursued that, but I'd be happy to take a look at the information you have so we can share it with staff and, and see what we can do and look at that. And as far as negotiating the agreement for city center, the reason it's to be determined is after Mr. Kepler's presentation, several council members gave me some questions. And then Ms. Nyforth and I took a look at this and said, we had some questions as well. Until we have the questions answered, I'm not in a position to, to recommend a closed session for council. So it's, it's still going to be to be determined. I suspect that unless something happens within the next, you know, by the end of this week, I really don't expect it to be at the next meeting. And we'll just keep it on the, keep it there just so it's on the, at least the back burner for, for your observation purposes.
Do other council members have any requests for future workshops topics? Councilmember Wojcowski?
Thank you. Yeah, I was going to save this for reports from commissions, but this probably feels more appropriate. Being that we just passed these goals, it is the desire of the Sustainability Advisory Board to have council, you know, I think the idea is to have them at their meeting, one of their meetings, I would hope their next meeting in February, to discuss goals that they have created, that they'd like to present and get council's weigh-in. They narrowed it down to three, three goals, so very digestible, but certainly very important goals where they want, they want, want council input and feedback and just really to have that discussion about what their plans and hopes are. So I would hope that we could have it at the next meeting, but scheduling-wise, I'd leave that up to city staff to kind of.
Typically, it's the first Monday of the month.
Yep.
And it wasn't this week because of the holiday, but.
We didn't meet on Thursday, so normally we meet on the Monday, but yeah, we moved it to Thursday last week.
So we're looking at February 6th. So I will be out of the office that day, but, you know, I know Ms. Nyforth's been following the, the discussions because of the pending goal, which is now an official goal. So certainly we're happy to be part of that. If council's comfortable with that, we can put it on and just keep you apprised of that. So a reminder that that meeting will be held on February 6th. We'd be happy to do that.
Yeah. And, and these goals are already completed. They've been approved by the committee and can be sent out ahead of time to members so you can look them over. But I just bring this up now because some of them are kind of time-sensitive in terms of, you know, submitting the appropriate documentation, things like that. But we want to get input first, so we really appreciate that.
Just clarifying, are you asking for council members to attend that February 6th?
February 6th.
Yeah.
We'll notice it as a joint meeting.
Okay. Cool.
All right, we are at council member announcements and statements. Any board or commission reports? Councilmember Wojcowski?
I'll just finish off real quick because I'm still in SAB. Just real quick for the community, the Sustainability Advisory Board is currently taking nominations for their annual environmental leadership award. That's presented at the city, the state of the city night. So the deadline is January 20th. So that is an award that can be nominated to an individual, a business or an organization, someone who exemplifies, you know, environmental leadership. And there's a, a number of things that they require, which I, I don't know if that can be found on the website? Do you know possibly?
I will find out.
Okay. But if not, I have the information about the requirements for that.
I'm sorry, did you mention the date or did I imagine this for the state of the city?
I was going to mention it. It is Monday, March 13th.
Yeah, but the deadline for this award is January 20th.
Right, because we got to know who to.
Yeah, who we have to pay.
Yeah.
So let people know, please nominate. Within, I think our next few meetings, we'll be reviewing any nominations and that's all I have.
All right. I just have a couple of things from Parks this week. We did not meet last month, I believe it was. They, there was a, quite a discussion regarding the volunteer program. So Friends of type for our parks and it sounds like that's been a success, but we're certainly growing the volunteer program. And there's an increase to the lifeguard and public pool staff hourly wage for next year. And then they are releasing the pruning schedule. So every, I think, fifth year it is, different parts of the city are on the schedule for pruning the terraced trees. So those zones you can check out, I believe it's on the Parks webpage for that pruning schedule to find out if this is the year your zone or your property is in that zone. So that's all I have. And we are at city manager announcements and statements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A few memos in your packet relative to some capital. A few memos in your packet relative to some capital projects, the construction-related engineering services for Bradley Street, which is an industrial area in the south end of town, another agreement for structural engineering related to just general 2023 capital improvement projects, the purchase, cooperative purchase of a truck that was in the budget, and then I have the update of outstanding issues. I would, I tried to incorporate some of the new goals, because I added that as a feature last year, and I thought it'd be good to continue that. So happy to answer any questions you might have based on those. The one thing I will point out at the bottom, the boards and commissions study, the council did indicate an interest in having a subcommittee. Take a look at boards and commissions, and it'll be my goal to have a resolution for you to consider at the next meeting. What I would ask that you do in the meantime is give serious thought to stepping forward to volunteer. The subcommittees are typically two, that's whatever council decides it wants to be, but generally, the recommendation is for a subcommittee of council to be two. So think of which two of you would like to volunteer, step forward. That'll certainly be up to you, but I want to give you a heads up that we're coming for you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Just a quick question on the outstanding issues, and I'm wondering if there's either, if you can add one to it, or somehow tell us when we're going to get an update. The, our contracts with our outstanding, with our, oh, I had it, but I'm drawing a blank, the sewer contracts with our, the township surrounding us, and an update on those and the progress, we'll call "and the progress" that we're hopeful that you're making on those.
Yeah, I think, I thought the city attorney said something, but we'll talk about that, because we need to keep you on the loop. We are preparing for a meeting in the near future, but we've kind of put some stuff into the various districts' hands to take a look at some language that we have proposed. So we're making progress. It's slow progress, but we're making progress, certainly better than we have in the previous three years. We probably had more motion, movement in the last three months than we had in the previous three years combined. So I'm very, I'm encouraged by it, but it's a process, but if we haven't given you an update, we'll owe you one.
I have a follow-up question also on an outstanding issue. It's been outstanding for several years now. Just a question, is there a specific statute on the creating the lifeline rates or varying the rates outside of a utility rate increase?
I wish you, you know, obviously, we, Mr. Cameron's off the phone. He would, Mr. Cameron, probably would be best to answer that.
And I don't need an answer right now.
Okay.
Yeah, if someone could point me to some snoozy reading.
Don't turn him around now that he's got his momentum going. Just let him talk.
Yeah, there's not really a statute about it. Basically, where we're at in that process is, we were hoping to get you some information in January. I'm not sure if we're going to be able to meet that deadline, but we wanted to give you kind of the rough breakdown analysis for you to review, and probably in February, have it set up for a council action. So right now, we do have the rate application in front of the Public Service Commission. We have provided some additional information. We've answered some of their questions, and then they come out with like a rate analysis that we'll present to council, and it'll be two options, one with a lifeline rate and one without. And you'll have to make that determination of what path you want to pursue and go down. But at this point, you know, until we get that information with the two different models to you, you'll have something to take a look at.
Would we have a workshop on that, though?
You can, if you want.
I'm just curious, is that workshop worthy?
It's probably...
I don't know if you'd need a workshop. I think it would be...
Straight action.
Yeah, presentation is probably...
Yeah, presentation, answer some questions. We'd probably have Ella's folks help us out in that presentation as well.
Okay. All right, thanks. Any other questions on outstanding issues? All right, take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.